So motion and agenda, any discussion? Seeing none, have to please vote. Okay, the agenda is approved, takes us to the next item, which is presentation request for contribution to the expansion of the Des Moines International Airport.
Mayor Baker, Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to me tonight. You may have heard that we're trying to build a new terminal at that airport. And we had a meeting and teams while going with the, you know, folks in the administration to follow up to that. So, Des Moines Airport is the largest airport in the state of Iowa. We have sixty-five percent of all of the commercial service traffic within the state recently. Very large part even to the shortage, five airports in the state have been given notice that they are going to lose our commercial service. So that will be three of us, and all of that comes to fruition, as announced that just three of us left. We have fifty percent of, fifty to fifty-five percent of all the cargo traffic in the state. There's only two airports that we see cargo, and that is Cedar Rapids and Des Moines. We are an airport authority, we are governed by a five-person board. They are appointed by the Des Moines City Council, but once appointed, they are independent, they're an autonomous board. So that's the bureaucracy of what the airport is called. In 2018, we did a market analysis, a market study, where I wanted to know where the capital was coming from. Also, we were leaking passengers during the market, where were they? Where did they get them? One of the things that surprised me the most, though, was that forty-three percent of the passengers that come through our terminal are coming from out of state or out of country. Fifty-seven percent of what we would consider local passengers. That report also did an analysis by zip code of where our passengers were coming from. This is kind of a big brother issue where you can actually, if you think about how you buy a ticket, you go on Google, you check the ticket prices, and you have your credit card. Right, and credit card address, and give them the access information. Like I said, it bothered me a little bit, we started it, everybody else is doing it, so we did two. As you can see on there, the data is link number thirty-five on the list. So with six thousand passengers flying from, from Nevada, four thousand of them flying through. On this, there's three pages on here, so it goes much further, this whole report is about a hundred and twenty-five percent long. So it's a lot more information there than what I'm interested in. Current status, we have about thirty non-stop destinations out of Des Moines right now. The, a lot of those are seasonal, and a lot of those are on off-geon, with the gechin base. Onboard in twenty-one, a lot of our non-stop destinations have increased. As you can see, we pretty well covered the map, except for the north west now with non-stop destinations. If you've come onto the airport lately, you've noticed that we've changed the entrance. The red on this map is done already, that magenta color or bleach pink color is under construction right now. It's construction, just the on-floor. The maps, we're also under construction on runway two-three. That's the second to the final phase of fully reconstruction of the landing base. Focus, I am just on the terminal. This is what's, an artist rendering of what you will see, and this is pretty accurate when you pull onto the airport. The art installation, full liftoff, got a fair amount of publication that was put on permanent loan to the airport by the Greater Des Moines Art Foundation. So we didn't pay for it, they paid for it ongoing to us. This is what the second phase of the entrance road will produce. If the cars to the left will eventually go in front of where the terminal will be. The cars on the right of that white line, that's our entering garage, and this will be the entrance to parking garage. Parking garage is about seventy to eighty percent completed design on it. Seventy-eight percent completed and construction on parking garage was started in twenty-three. This is traveling south on, on floor, and that hoop comes on around, so that will again become the entrance. Makes that hoop turn around, cuts underneath the entrance road, and becomes the entrance into the extension of the parking garage. We have our owner representative team onboard, and this is a team of architects, engineers, planners that represent us. This project is large enough, we don't have the expertise on staff, we needed help, and so we hired the owner representative team. And we tasked them with several tasks, one of the first task was to take a look at the difference in the cost. Basically, what has inflation done to us from 2018 to today? And the, in that old box there, that first line is the inflation from eighteen to twenty-two, that's the inflation factor. Then they inflated it on, estimated inflation on up to mid-year construction, which would be 2025 if we stayed on schedule. In total, to build fourteen gates, that the cost has gone up a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that's the inflation factor there. We also asked them to update our terminal area forecast, which is a forecast of passengers coming through the terminal. The last one was done in 2014, and of course, we outpaced that tremendously. When they updated it originally, when we did planning, we were only supposed to need fourteen gates under the new terminal area forecast with growth that is going on in central Iowa. We now need seventeen gates, we're not for that. So that's good news, we're still growing, the area is still growing. The bad news is, of course, gates cost money, and that's the second impact. And the third impact that we're facing today is just that, to bond the infrastructure. But this is the money that we have to date, our estimated bondee and/or cash reserves that we would put into this terminal, it's two-hundred-and-twenty-four million. We've had a fair amount of luck, asking local governments for assistance. Today, we're at twenty-eight point six million that have been committed from nineteen different entities. That's why I'm here tonight, is to continue that process and ask for some contribution. The state has taken almost fifty-nine million dollars. And in large part, what helped them convince them to contribute was to be able to take those resolutions that we have to date and show them that there was more commitment, that local governments recognize the need and the economic value of this new terminal. And then lastly, that last line is what we know that we're going to get from the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed. That's what we know, very bottom line is what I don't know, that has not been announced, I think there will be an announcement here in a couple of weeks, from the phone call that was on today. But what I can tell you is that there was competitive, competitive portion of that bill that we're competing for, there's five billion dollars. And that's split over five years, so this year, there was one billion dollars available, six-hundred-and-fifty applications, totally fourteen billion dollars worth of ass. So I'm not anticipating that we're going to see large sums of money in the, in the side. We're showing the money, and I do anticipate that we will see some funding, I just can't tell you how. The other thing that the owner's representative team did was look at ways to cut costs. And the very first thing they did was straighten the terminal out. The curved walk on the terminal looks nice, but straight is cheaper to build than curved, so straightened it out. Won't have the same aesthetic feel. The other thing that they suggested was that we build it in, in phases. We always knew that we would have to do it in phases, but we thought that it would be continuous construction. We have to do it in phases because of operating. Today, we're going to have to do it in phases because of the cost, the increased cost. And the very first thing that would get built is the primary processor where the ticket counters are. That's the passenger screening, bag screening, the inbound bag systems, that area would be the first to get built. That's, that's one of our biggest passenger pinch points. The biggest pinch point is that we're running out of airplanes around the terminal, especially overnight. And as, as airlines continue to work at Des Moines and show interest in us serving Des Moines, that they need to be on the gate overnight. We're going to announce space for that, and that's what's the biggest concern to me. So there would be at least five gates added to that, to that first phase. And then the plan is to do a short bridge, it's in that red circle right there, connected to the existing power sources. So that we would end up with seventeen gates that we need today, it's just the combination of new and old. And I can't tell you how long the old will retain, you, the airport will continue to save money and, and work with federal government to, to get other funding, so that in pieces, I'm sure that that would be faced as well, the old will be torn down, and the whole thing we do at that point. That red stoplight chart down at the bottom, you may have seen before, that's been around since 2004. You can see that three thousand, or I'm sorry, three million car passengers that we are solidly in the red in every aspect of passenger processing. We weren't supposed to reach that until 2027, we reached it in 2019. Our current traffic in May, we were about four percent short of the May traffic in 2019. So we're running right at the thousand and fifteen level right now. So the capacity of the airport is being stressed again today. The cost of building that, the chart above it, the cost of building just that primary processor is estimated at four-hundred-and-eleven million dollars. That's what we're trying to collect, we're trying to wrap up, and it's a short before, we had about three-hundred-and-thirty-six million dollars. However, that doesn't, or that, that doesn't include the fifty, the fifty million dollars for membership drives, I just tracked that off. That's the gap that we're trying to fill, either through the federal government or through our own savings and bond. This is just a deck that we put together initially, showing all the cities that we would anticipate reaching out to. And then as we got to the outer counties, combining counties and cities together. Again, we have nineteen resolutions in file that helped tremendously, we went to the state, but it also has a big impact with the local government on that, on that competitive side of the town. We can walk in and say, locally, there's still even knowledge committed to this project, that's how vital it is to, to the area. That says a lot, whether we're talking to the FAA or whether we're talking to the Secretary of Transportation, we have his office as well, demonstrating on this. Of all those individuals that we've asked, and we'll tell you that we've talked to story county, I have not heard back from them, I've got attributes back out of them. I have heard back from Ames, Ames did that, or just they did not allow me to even present it to the council, because I simply stepped to them. And have now talked to story city, yeah, I hope so. We've got a little bit of word left to do here, and story county, before I can tell you who hasn't participated. Tell you that the city of Des Moines and Polk County each are admitted at ten million dollars each, which you would think that they would be the benefit from this. Projected timeline is that we would start construction, and it's, and it's under design right now, we have the design team as well. We would start construction on that primary processor early in 2024. The sooner that we can get that on the ground, the more eligible we are for those competitive or discretionary dollars from the federal government. They just aren't funding hardly any of the flat work, that'd be aircraft doing some. But that is the timeline, it's important, she was born, construction started in twenty twenty-four. So our quest, the request is simply asking for a contribution to help us leverage the funds and chart in there, straighten out what's asking. But it is based on, on population. On that deck, go back to it, on that deck, you'll see that there was three levels, approximately fifty hours for capita, and that will be the city of Des Moines and Polk County contributed. The next level down was thirty dollars for capita, and that was through anybody over ten thousand population, and then on down to ten thousand for capita. And most people stay within that range. Pleasant Hill, that didn't, their population, and she has like nineteen people, ten thousand, so down to ten dollar contribution. And I can, and I can show, get the request to you, and I apologize, I thought I had that slide in here when I sent this, but clearly I didn't, but I can show you, because we have storage county and the cities combined, there was a breakout specific to, to data, and I can show that. But I'd be glad to answer any questions. Again, I'm pretty sure it's at ten dollars per capita. They're split over four years. And the resolution, I can also send a draft resolution, but bottom line is, if we don't build the terminal, we don't want anyone's money. So we won't start blocking that money until we're sure we're going to start each one. Answer any questions, any comments?
Council? We did a year's presentation, and I think council, that they want to brought back as an agenda item for discussion. See if that's not.
I will forward that information to mentor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And moving on in our presentation, we have, what's that, Jonathan here with ICAF?
Good evening, you should have this in your package, that will outline last year's contribution compared to this year. I'm just going to go through a couple of things. I met with all of the departments this year, we had a lot of discussion about property limits, also vehicle limits, on the vehicles that we had replacement cost on. We increased the total insured value by four million dollars this year, so now insured at blanket seventy-two million for the city and all of their buildings and the property. This was mainly due to inflation along with increased construction costs, along with supply chain impacts, so continue to monitor those as, as those pain. I met with Karen and Jordan, we talked about, you know, how do we help save some money here? And really, self-insurance of the smaller buildings would be an option, and we do that with higher deductibles. Our property rate is one of the lowest out of all ICAF's studies, as I found out, because I, I asked for deductible options, we have a five-thousand-dollar deductible now. So if you think about the ratio when that happened, we paid five thousand dollars for that instance. That's every single time we had a property, we had that five-thousand-dollar deductible. So we looked at a ten-thousand-dollar option and a twenty-five-thousand-dollar option. The ten-thousand-dollar option saved fifteen hundred dollars in here, and the twenty-five-thousand-dollar option saved a lot. So not worth it at all to move at this point. I asked why the savings weren't, you know, terrible, to what we're obviously taking on as self-insurance, and the response was the rate that we already have for the properties. And do this down later, so it's not the best decision for us to move at this point. So my recommendation, we delete that five thousand. I don't want to take any of the buildings off, we talked about that to you, we take some of the smaller stuff off, because if you do have a large tornado event, we would want to make sure those things are covered also, within the blanket. And we looked at autos this year, one of the things ICAF asked, we had the lease equipment on a separate schedule, so if we get replacement costs, it became difficult during losses to handle that through claims. So they asked if we could go back on the vehicles, so the change for us is that goes from replacement cost to actual cost, that would be. So we increased all of our explorers up to sixty-two thousand, so forty thousand to the basis, we're on twenty-two thousand for all the equipment inside. And we decreased a lot of the older fire apparatus to liability only, along with arson wrecks, and streets also include multiple other vehicles, liability. On the scheduled equipment, ICAF, any vehicle that was used for road use, so we have an international act, where we try to always put on our, our scheduled equipment to get replacement cost on until four, five thousand dollar pieces of equipment. I got moved to the auto schedule this year for, for actual cash value. So as with the property review, all the limits on the scheduled equipment, and made sure, you know, the lawnmowers and those type of things that we're struggling with. To get right now, or the increased costs were insured to value. When it comes to the work comp, you guys are still doing amazing, you have a point seven remodel, last year was point seven-two, I attribute that to your safety group that you guys have. You guys do a lot of things in this community for safety. Oh, one of the best that I've seen, so that shows in your month. And then ICAF continues to have the grant program, so it's a thousand dollars every year that we apply for, we kind of share it throughout the, the different departments. On this year, water guy, so we added a trench box, or at least a thousand dollars towards a trench box. So overall, you'll notice that we're seeing about a twenty-one percent increase this year. It's pretty, pretty standard, if I'm not on the low end, to what I'm seeing in public entities right now. That's because insurance is the law of large numbers, and right now, we've had a lot of, a lot of losses, whether it be on the property side with the ratio and, and the tornadoes, or on the general liability side. We're seeing a ton of nuclear jury verdicts, and those are over the ten million dollar limit, along with just social inflation. So we're just seeing a lot more live than we're seeing when it comes to place liability along with public issues. So due to those things, overall, the program has gone up. ICAF has stayed pretty steady, there's a lot of other areas that we write for that have decreased limits and not allowed us to go higher on limits. The only thing ICAF has changed this year for us is cyber liability. And that, to me, was, was kind of necessary, we had a million-dollar limit before, we still do for cyber liability, but they limited cyber crime to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which is the extortion that we're all hearing about. When we get the ransomware event, so again, we spoke about, spoke about it as a saying, we feel that we have the controls in place, that we aren't as concerned with an extortion event, we have backups in place. So we're continuing to obviously make improvements on that. One of the other things you'll note on there is the credit voucher is zero again this year, so this is the overall profitability of the program, they give money back to the numbers. In the past, we usually saw about fifteen thousand, the, the last year, we had it, it was two thousand and twenty, it was at eleven thousand, so again, this year, the program wasn't profitable enough for us to do. Yeah, the next couple of pages are just an outline of the claims, again, we had a great, a great claims history, but unfortunately, for all for the property side of things, it's going up along with the liability, so last year, you saw, we had only eight claims, totaling about sixteen thousand dollars, and our biggest one was water being free, that was fifteen thousand dollars of damage to a whole order of property. Over the past five years, we've had eighty-seven claims, majority of those coming from, again, those, those were claims of small, because overall, we've paid about forty thousand, so that's, that's extremely great. So two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars in the past five years. Talking to all the department heads, I feel like we've taken all the action we can to make this as inexpensive as possible at this point. We're obviously continuing to have conversations with the hard carriers, to figure out how we can make things more affordable. Guys are, are doing all the right things, unfortunately, will change, but if we continue, whether we are, it's going to be not make insurance more of a catch-up loss program. What questions you guys have?
Now, this is the consent agenda, any items maybe for other considerations?
Second, second, those two items. Like to to both marks. Got some red tobacco permits, I for, yeah, I.
And I will submit a document.
Motion, second, can be approved, consent agenda, removing the most marks for consideration, please. And all those favor, yes, hit your button. Okay, that is approved, so now we can pull out the most marks and bar.
I was just looking at the fact that it's been about a year since we were here, and we're being invited to, for tobacco and alcohol. To approve those permits and licenses, they can open. And here we are a year later, they have not opened, and they're asking for renewal. I'm wondering if there is a way that this opportunity could be as intentional as we have been from our end, but a bit more persuasive from the other side somehow? Talk about what exposure we want to be, tell them not, I'm ready for them not to be here.
So Barbara, do you look to have them request that they would come answer their questions?
I think that would be a start, I think we could have someone. To talk about that, that will be a specific timeline, so that our action reflects theirs. So we can time that in a way that is helpful for them, but not spend another year property something completely unoccupied.
Karen said, so we'll table that for the next meeting?
We can table it, we can invite them to come, there's no, we can't require anyone to come as a, as a, because historically, you don't require anyone to come to the renewal. So it could be a basis for denial, but we could certainly table to invite them and see if they feel like it's time for a bigger conversation. Yeah, and I think that conversation can, but I don't know that it's tied to the permitting process. But we can certainly
Look at the tissue, no matter if it looks possible, if it's a planned arrangement, that, just a bit. Yeah, that's, that's, that, that's what the Osmart brought to us. In a formal way.
Well, I think they're in danger of looking like we're trying to strong, we do something they can't. It doesn't really matter if you It doesn't really matter if he's open or not, he's not violating the rules. He's not, I mean, he's taking care of his property, he owns it. It's like telling someone they gotta put a fence up or not put a fence up. I mean, I think we're walking a fine line by denying him just because we don't like what they're doing. Can't really do that.
And that's why I made the comment, Brian, that it can't, it can't be used as a basis for denial. You can certainly extend the invitation.
But I don't think they all have to, I don't think they have to explain themselves on what he's doing in there. As long as he's not violating some code or some ordinance or is a danger to the, a dangerous property or, you know, blah, blah, blah. I just, I don't, I think it's a slippery slope.
I think somehow we need to send a message that they're not maintaining the minimum standards that we expect.
But are they? So does the, do we have a minimum standard? I mean, it's mowing.
Uh, is it?
Moving your snow, really? I mean, they're not, we're not going to come to you, Steve, and say, hey, we don't like Congress hates our house. But we will come to you if you're not willing, you're all good. I mean, so the minimum standard is pretty loose. I mean, it really is, I mean, to be honest, it's, it is, but. I would say one thing that will have some teeth is um, whenever we discuss furthers that beg and possibly ordinance. That's something I would. Yeah, and that's why I'm saying if he's not, I mean, if it's not dangerous, Ray. I mean, it was, I mean, we had to go, it was pretty dangerous, the last one we did. I mean, if it's not a danger to the community and it's, I mean, I agree, I'd like him to be open or not open. But I think we have to be careful about. I just think we have to be careful about it because we could really get a slipper statement. So, yeah, I giddy up, but I think we have to be careful.
I, I appreciate that perspective.
Yeah.
With the nice prime properties.
Yeah, but he don't.
Something, I know, but how can we encourage him to? Let's engage, truly engage.
All, all ideas, contact information, reach out. Sounds like a graduation approval tonight, would you like to hear his plans for progress? If you got to comment, I'm going to need a motion either to approve or to table. Second. Motion by Barb, second by Brian to approve, most mark, applications, manuals, further discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. Okay, that is approved, takes us into appointments. I have some reappointments in front of you, there are some vacancies that we are looking for, further appointments to go. So we're not coming in, those are the big ones for the board of commissioners. I will do permit those appointments, that, Brian, thank, any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. One more button. Okay, so that is approved.
What awards are left, what, what needs to be left that's people ask?
Yeah, I know, library and maybe historic preservation. Library and historic service.
Thank you.
So if they're interested in having that happen soon, it's probably, I think that's.
Okay.
Okay, so public forum, this time set aside for comments on the public topics of city business other than those that some agenda of action may be taken. And that's for comments, five minutes or less, and Doug, are you here to?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we'll have you step up and give your name and address for the record.
My name is Doug Anderson, uh, I'm actually not a citizen, I live outside of Ohio. Two four zero seven nine six hundred and seventy of Avenue. Uh, I'm here tonight representing what we call the Story County A T B U T B Alliance. We're a Facebook group of about seven hundred and thirty members. Hopefully, the name kind of gives up what we're going to talk about or what we're interested in. As you probably are aware, um, starting on Friday, the state of Iowa has opened up most of the county roads in the entire state now. Um, Story County has never allowed that, so that'll be a big change for us. Of the, I believe, is there sixteen communities in Story County, eight of those communities already allow uh, off-highway vehicles access into the community. And so our group would like to start working with some of the remaining citizens to see, work something out here in a minute. Be able to access the roads and streets within town with some stuff. I won't take up my five minutes of talking, I'd rather hear your questions and concern.
Do these other communities make a permit or do they just say it's okay?
Um, in the past, they have, but with the new state law, they're not allowed to, they're not, not allowed to charge for a permit or anything like that. But they are allowed to say you can go on this street, you can go on that street, hours of operation, et cetera.
Good question.
And I, we may have other members here, I don't know if you have. There we go. The other thing is I did read that legislation, Buzz. But then, and on your Facebook page, so. And I've read through it and it's been probably a week or two. Do, does the state, are they requiring seatbelts, horns, mirrors, terms of, mirrors? So mirrors? Horns and mirrors. Horns and mirrors. Worn a mirror, seatbelt? No seatbelts. headlights. Uh, blinkers are not required. Operators must be at least eighteen years old, have a valid driver's license, have proof of insurance, have a D N R registration sticker, uh, current registration sticker on them. Speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour. In general, it's access to all unpaved county roads. Counties are allowed to open up access to paved roads. You're also allowed to use a paved road to get from one, allow pointing to another, if there's no better way to get there, so. Um, you're not allowed on uh, four-lane highways of any kind of interstates or like highway three. I, I mentioned speed limit thirty-five, yeah. I did put together a map, if you guys want me to send it to you, I kind of looked at where all the gravel roads come into town. You know, at a very minimum, I think people want access to food, come in for a meal, uh, fuel, repair facilities. You're somebody like Buzz and you live in town, you'd like to build a gift from your house or wherever you're storing it, out to one of the allowed routes. I think it'd be nice to have access to the fairgrounds because I think a lot of people from outside the county might use their eighteen to get to a happy fair. So, um, in a perfect world, like all the other smaller towns, if we could just ride anywhere we, we like, that would be nice. I'm sure it will be easier for law enforcement, certainly be easier for operators not having the no routes, but uh. I just think another uh, good aspect of it is um, snow removal. Because these are vehicles that a lot of people use for snow removal or maybe they're helping out neighbors. Maybe it's a snow removal company that uses them in their operations, so. That's another thing to think about. Could you sense that now? Yeah, I, I've actually got a PowerPoint, I'll just send it to you, just use your emails that are on the, that's okay. I can send it to you, redistribute it. All right, I'll do that. Uh, we did, the map I put together, I'll, no, I don't think anybody wants to cross out here. Yeah, and S fourteen's. So I, I, I've shown us suggested ground. Buzz, I assume you'd like to see that.
Yes.
Okay.
Name of the council? Does it already bring the topic back?
By that cap, yeah, with state law. Yeah, like we have to make it sit one way or the other. Sure, if you'd like to put that on the agenda. If you need even more information, it's helpful. If you need help on what other cities have done, you know, some groundwork for you. Very helpful. Be more than happy to.
Okay. During collecting data about the staff's action. All right.
Thank you, Doug. So in terms of getting on the agenda, you can just let me know when I'm.
Yeah, so staff will start working on it, you can send whatever material you have now. And then Aaron has some experience with this one of the communities and can work with the board on some options.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in the public forum? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum with the end of the whole business. Old Business A, ordinance number ten twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-two, ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of the Bay of Iowa by amending the zoning classification, the parcel of land owned by Kerry B. Martin at ten, uh, thousand two, the avenue, located within the corporate limits of the city of the Bay of Iowa from L I Limited Industrial District, R two residential district, third and final reading. Second, decent, Steve, discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved, takes us to B, ordinance number ten twenty-six, twenty-one, twenty-two, ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of the Bay of Iowa by amending the zoning classification, parcel land owned by Michael Aldoia, four thirty-sixth Lemon Street, located within corporate limits of the city of the Bay of Iowa from L I Limited Industrial District, R two residential district, third and final reading. Order approved, second, consent, day, discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved, and Mr. Hanson is looking forward to talk about Hattery Shelter project.
Okay, good evening, everyone. There was a council action forum in your packet that talked a little bit about the history of that shelter replacement at Hatted Park and what we've gone through and how we've gotten to this point. Just a brief summary of that, uh, we had plans and specs put together that we sent out to seven area local contractors to replace that shelter with a structure that was essentially the same size and look as what was there that got destroyed in creation. With that, um, we did not receive any responses to those uh, plans and specs we sent out for, for points to those seven. So I had a conversation with Aaron Clanton, and uh, so we're looking to approach it from a different direction. Basically, having the city um, purchase all the materials and negotiate with a local contractor to have them put the structure up. With the structure, we looked at um, wood structure with shingles and that wood structure with standing cement road. And just for um, your reference, uh, the materials for the wood structure with a shingle roof were fourteen thousand seven hundred eighty dollars. With the standing cement road in place of the shingles, sixteen thousand nine forty-seven for the materials. Now, it's just structure itself and materials, we'll pick out the concrete that's there and then we would have to figure out uh, someone come and put new concrete in after the structure is built. The other item that we talked about with that was maybe we can replace an old steel structure. So I got a price on that too, which was just a little bit smaller than the structure that we have designed by H R Green. And for various purposes, just material delivered to Nevada, the most basic structure, so forty-four thousand five hundred. So I think we want to go with the wood structure. When we talked about park board, they would like the wood structure with standing cement metal of all longevity on that. So what I'm here tonight to ask of you is if you would approve for us to go forward is um, basically have in general, I guess, and purchase materials and then negotiate with a local contractor to get that structure. Questions that anyone might have?
Yeah, got any interest from the property? I have, there are a couple. It's not what we can maybe, I know that this, you know, I'm throwing this, our staff wanted us, but it's not what we can. It's possible we could take a look at that. There's, no, we do some concrete. We have, we have staff that's pretty good now. Yep, we do. So um, you know, the, the one thing that may come into that is just, you know, the amount of work that's on. Right. I've done that's kind of passion, but yeah, but certainly more your children.
Tim, I don't know exactly why the other structure blew down, other than it's really strong wind, but do you think this one will be durable enough to hold up?
Well, the other structure was really old.
Yeah.
It wasn't in greatest shape, but maybe stretch of the imagination, so. Yeah, H R Green designed this and they designed it with wind loads, snow load, all six, actually, it's a sturdy structure.
It'll be good.
All right.
All right.
Motion on a second, base, we think. They know further discussion, council please vote. That is approved, which takes us to uh, B, approval of H R Green work orders to look serious as for cemetery project phase two, not good seed.
Okay, so I've shared with you um, over the last year or so, what we've accomplished through phase one of our cemetery G I S uh, project. And so we have money budgeted um, in our new fiscal year budget, starting July one, to take this to phase two. And this is uh, and a, a goal to get a useful and uh, easy to use tool for the community as well as the staff to research grave sites, cemetery locations, general information, things of that nature. So um, we've got a lot accomplished, and Mike Listo with Howard R. Green is here to share with you what we've accomplished so far and also share with you what this next phase is going to, to look like. And then he'll also talk to you a little bit about a mobile app that will be available at the end of this process. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike and let him uh, kind of share with you where we've been, um, what our next step is and what our ultimate goal is. Turn it over to Mike.
Thanks, thanks, Tim. Like Tim said, I'm Mike Listo, H R Green, we've been working on this project for, they're about, about a year now, so we're now in the phase two. Um, kind of peeling off of what Tim said, what we did is that the first stage is we backed out of the headstone. High in accuracy, it's here, so we've got good placements of where all your stones are that were currently out there in the Bay of municipal cemetery. With that, we then widened a lot of flats, um, so we could figure out where each block is. And then within each block, you have a lot of lots, then within your lot, you have the plots where individual, individually purchased each plot to bury that. So we overlaid all that with the, the plans that from historical records that we're able to get. And now we are starting to uh, actually put the headstone information that we collected with an actual photo onto those plots. So that way, the public and city staff can utilize that to figure out what plots have been purchased, where are people buried? Um, and for people, the public to actually get onto this application online via you guys' website, you know, into this um, app for, for further following out where to make your key. Like Tim mentioned before, um, we have a desktop app, and then we also have a mobile app that anybody can actually launch their smartphone or a tablet. And you would download the free app, you can link through you guys' website, and it would actually uh, pull up the cemetery, kind of similar to what you're seeing on the screen today. And you'd be able to search by last name, first name, however you see fit, whatever the city size to do. And um, it would actually give you walking directions. So if you're in the cemetery and you want to find out who it was, you'd actually be able to just pull it up, click it up who you're going to and actually walk right into the, to the cemetery, uh, to the plot itself or the stone. With that, um, this is the, the actual uh, uh, desktop application that you can use either on your laptop, your own home or at network. Um, as you navigate in, you're going to see different things pop up, um, and it starts to get into clarity. So um, depending on what the city decides to do, um, we can have a public version and we can have a city option. One for the city of saying, okay, which, which plots are still available for purchase? Um, and then that can also be made to the public, so they, the public was interested in, hey, I'm interested in purchasing a plot. Maybe they'll see which ones are, are available for purchase. If you wanted to just type in uh, somebody's name, you can kind of see where it's located. You can just type in the name, it will automatically come up with a large list of ones that are, that meet that criteria, either first or last name. And it starts to pull in a whole bunch of information that we've already transferred for this demo. Kind of gives you information about, you know, when people were born, when they, when they passed, um, last name, maiden name. It also has ties to a headstone record, so if you click on that, I'm sure the final one actually has that stone. You can actually see a photo that was, was taken of the headstone. So if I was to open up. So if I was to open up this person right here, you'd be able to actually see the headstone. So very valuable for people that like the genealogy stuff, like to do research for this kind of stuff. Gives it instant access. I know, Tim, I don't know, you and Jean, I don't know how many you called, you might get on, hey, I just want to upload it or a fast photo of the headstone if I'm out of state. This allows them to get instant access without bothering the staff, so.
We do get a lot of requests like that, people that are out of state, want pictures of, you know, headstones and bloodlines. So certainly we're happy to do that, but this lets them do that themselves and make the search. A lot of the genealogy, things that take place typically are evenings and weekends, and that's when we don't have staff there. So this really is a good tool for them to be able to access the information that they want to during their free time as well.
I would love to show you the the mobile app we just couldn't get to pull up through our live stream here, unfortunately. But mainly we're just here just to kind of see if they're willing to approve the next phase of actually taking all the records from from the headstones that were collected and transfer into these plots for a searchable tool that we can open up to city staff.
And there was an action form in your packets that hopefully gave you some good background on on that as well. So are there any questions we could answer?
So is there a is there a subscription fee to remain on the app, or is all amongst we're in, we're in?
Yep, so this is all tied into your your GIS, that we've been offering, so it's all available to that, so it's all just paid to that. So it's actually another method that they just added another layer to you guys' GIS.
Okay, gotcha.
So keep on, keep guys.
So there will be work involved for staff as far as, you know, as a new stone gets put in place, throughout each place, a stone gets put in place. You know, Gene will have to go out and he'll take a photo of that, and he can actually upload it right to this via his phone or my iPad, whatever, you know, we have to lose. So it it really will never be done. But, you know, getting us to the point where hopefully we can maintain it, you know, going forward, because we have these.
Do you have requests now, Tim, for people that are trying to find headstones?
Oh, yeah, yep, yep. It it's quite a bit, actually. So you don't think about it until you actually, you know, spend some time doing it. But by sharing with with these guys, earlier tonight I had one here not too long ago, I think I sent ten or twelve photos to some Nevada state. People start to look, you know, for people, they can build a branch out into a lot of layers of, you know, family, development, friends, things of that nature. So it's, people really, you know, like to do that type of thing, so we we accommodate this best we can. So with this, and maybe you said it, I missed it, but this would be able to get on there and see what are open. So if you were searching a lot, you could just get on this app and say, okay, Nevada's got this lot open in this part of the cemetery, is that on to?
And it's kind of up to to see if they want to open it up, but right now I just built it in just because that's a common thing, where it's a quick filter where you can say, you know, I'm looking for plots that are, yep. Yep, which ones are for sale, not for sale, or available. And just by switching that, it'll actually color code the 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 map based on which ones are open. So again, it's still work in progress, but you can see that there's some that's highlighted down here that are available for purchase, so you can actually see placement of it, you know, based on, you know, my my image.
And as we go through this next phase, there will be some verification work on our end that, you know, we're going to have to work hand to hand with them to, there are some stones that you can't read the information. And so we're going to have to work with with Mike and his group to provide the information, filter out our file. But it'll be a really good tool. And I think our end goal would be to have something that will be verified by the top, I think, maybe April of May, yeah, of next year. So as we approach Memorial Day. Other questions?
Do you have any motions? It's bar, further discussion? None, have to please vote. And that is approved, which takes us to D, resolution number ninety three, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, resolution approving the contract between Iowa Economic Development Authority and the City of Nevada for the awarded community development slot grant COVID nineteen program for the city. We want to thank city staff and N E C and everybody else who was able to get all that money. It was one-time money, it was going really fast. So there were other businesses that potentially would like to be part of it, but the debt, the money was disappearing. So they had to get what was complete in, and that's those ones that were awarded. Ain't no other discussion, council please vote. Those are approved, takes us to D, resolution number ninety four, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, resolution approving memorandum of understanding between City of Nevada Iowa and Public Professional and Maintenance Employees, Local two thousand three I U P A T, authorizing and directing signing of the M O U to the union contract. I'm going to approve.
I'll say.
I see, need discussion. Seeing none, council please vote. Approved, and then the next one has a wording update in there. So it's resolution number ninety five, resolution approving inflation rates for permanent non-bargaining employees effective July first.
Right.
Jason, need discussion? None, have to please vote. Approved, and when you do the next one, there's an updated legal description that goes with that resolution. So that's number F, resolution number ninety six, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, resolution setting date for public hearing on designation of the expanded Nevada urban renewal area and urban renewal plan.
Move to.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, council please vote. That is approved, takes us to G, approved neighborhood improvement incentive program applications for twelve twenty three K Avenue in the amount of one thousand six hundred and eighty dollars.
Move to.
Bar, discussion. Seeing none, have to please vote. That is approved, takes age, resolution number ninety seven, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, resolution approving administrative subdivision application for Storytime Hospital, six forty South Nineteenth Street. Saying very enthusiastic, Bart.
Still behind my house, so that's.
Any discussion? Seeing none, have to please vote. And that is approved, which takes us to reports, starting with our city.
You know, just have some regular meetings, N E C, have another N E C meeting this week. Brenda had some other outstanding meetings that we typically have on a monthly basis. But other than my two reports that I've provided, I do not have anything for you unless you have questions for me.
And moving on from my report, wanted to give a shout out to the Nevada alumni group that did together a really nice weekend. They tried to do some new things for those coming back, the community, celebrate them as a welcome home. And then the Nevada alumni also contributed two thousand dollars to the Nevada foundation, the market for the field class project. So a nice gesture as well. Storytime Emergency Management, he has retired or is retiring, so he has a reception on the thirtieth. And so I know Jordan and probably some other staff will swing by that, council will be welcome too. And then the deputy emergency management coordinator, Melissa, was appointed to take his take his spot. It was really competitive, they had a lot of applicants, a lot of strong applicants, and she had the best background. Taking that right over, which provides some good continuity too. And then HR Green did a nice tour of the waste treatment facility, and so that's moving along. And, you know, some more council is interested in seeing that, so I think they're going to do it again in the fall after this one's. Other than that, any questions for me? Council reports.
Last week I received the governor's volunteer award, which was a nice gesture nominated by Main Street Iowa for work with Main Street Nevada. The reason I bring it up, it's not supposed to be my own award, but we should as a city be nominating some for that award every year. Because it's it's a really nice one, recognize folks.
And Bart's on the convention.
There you go. So file that away for next year, we need to nominate somebody.
Congratulations. And then if there's a way, you can even get on the list, so when they open those nominations.
I'll put it on the calendar.
There you go. Any other council reports? Now that you said that, Marlo's probably going to be a nice spotlight. Be on face of the ball. Brenda, do you have any updates from N E C?
I don't.
Great.
Can you meet this couple of things here? We're doing a piece on Camelot Theater that's going to be sort of showcase for the National Fire Sprinkler Association, the grant that you all were supporting, help them to put a sprinkler system in the upstairs apartments to remedy some of the accident stuff from nineteen twenty eight that didn't really exist in our current code down. So I think it'll be a really good piece, Melissa provided some input on Melissa's slide, and we're great to work with. And so the president of the National Fire Sprinkler Association has corresponded with us, and we're really excited. So I thought that's kind of be give a little exposure for our community. The other thing is, you're going to see our police cars and some of our fire apparatus now have pink traffic signs. So the traffic incident management program now, the state patrol is all shifted to these pink construction sites. Apparently, everybody's used to orange, and so they don't pay much attention. We had an accident out on thirty and sixth, and I did tend to notice more cars were shipping over. But as the director and I have had these conversations, if you would paint flashing lights and people would learn to get over, but that that is not happening as much as we'd like to see that happen. So we'll see how that takes over, and we're a little nervous because we're here and they're going to make pink vests too. So I'm sure staff are not going to be overly excited about that, but it keeps us safe, that's what we'll be. And then the last thing is tomorrow night at seven P M, I'll be meeting Director Martinez and myself, meeting with the four township trustees to redo the services agreement. We provide fire and the best protection for the four townships surrounding Nevada, they're great partners to us, the rural folks. We have about a hundred and thirty seven square miles, a lot of that is rural Nevada. And so we're excited to meet with those folks and talk about the next renewal of that agreement. Got a couple of sentences we need to add to that agreement, but other than that, they seem pretty excited about it. They're pretty happy with their source. That's all I have.
For natural, any pink fire trucks too?
You know what, if it's brand new, I'll take it. You heard it.
Brenda?
I forgot, sorry about that. I don't know that if all of you've seen the invitation to the event that's happening Thursday over the lunch hour. We're going to welcome a new business down, the new car wash is opening up Thursday. Over the lunch hour, they're going to serve lunch, and I do believe they're going to be honoring some of our local heroes at that time as well. So then we'll start at eleven thirty and we'll go through the lunch hour and hope you can join us.
Hi.
I'm good.
Director?
Then I have my sergeant take care of this.
Delegating like a true leader.
I don't have a whole lot, Wednesday we're in a track to walk. Right out front here, five and seven. General day to day with the weather's been really nice, so it's been really busy. Been getting west floor street clovers for lot parties and whatever for it next week. And with being full staff, we have also still a lot more training, getting the in-service training done at least. Peter doesn't, on the left, in case I have any questions. Thank you.
Hello, so we recently completed some painting at the library, touching up everything last month. And now we're working on getting quotes for updated security cameras. We don't have a very current system, and so it makes things difficult. And we have seen an increase in minor vandalism, both inside and outside the library, unfortunately. So we're working on those quotes. The good news is for summer learning challenge, which is what we're kind of rebranding our summer reading program. So far, we have almost two hundred kids and teens registered, and probably some are between fifty and seventy-five adults have taken our reading bingo cards. So we're really excited by the amount of people participating in that. And we've got lots of events scheduled for people of all ages. One of the ones I wanted to highlight is one that has unfortunately been rescheduled twice now, but we are finally having nanny come to do their adults, or to do their inner voices program on Thursday night at six P M at the library. And so it will be people who have base mental illness and they are talking about their own experiences. And as previously mentioned, we are looking for a new board member, Pete Porching, finished out his term, and we are very appreciative of everything he's done for the library. And we hope whoever the mayor appoints next and all applicants are supportive of the library mission statement and the A L A's library bill of rights. Any questions or anything? All right, thank you.
Just a couple of things to share for tonight. First, if you've been on social media at all, you've maybe seen some photos of Brian Westall's Eagle Scout project that he did down at Wilson Pond. I would encourage you to drop about west side of the community on the trail, go take a look at that. Really neat project, he did a good job, and they had a lot of support. So we appreciate his, you know, all his time and efforts to make that a voice, so it's it's nice. The other thing, we had a meeting this morning with R and H and Pearl Pike representatives, just a quick meeting on score and kind of talk about some of the next year finishes, things like that. But it does sound like maybe the next month, the end of next month, we'll start to see some staging on site and getting mobilization out there, maybe some work actually started. So we're excited and encouraged about that, so otherwise we'd be happy to answer the questions.
Any big tournaments go through?
Just finished the last one, this last week, I think that was number nine or ten. So we do have one in July, so one day, but not even national ones. So I was not on the docket for that, two or a couple years. All right, thank you.
Karen?
Just Karen for the end of the year, and we've talked on it earlier, and we've met, and S R F framework met. Challenging all bases and.
Challenging all different phases and.
Mary, I have too much to report, which felt considerable, the number of issues. Street project, Eleventh Street is nearing completion and Ryan, do you know if it'll be open this week?
Should be open around Thursday or Friday.
Okay, so one of those roadblocks will be eliminated. So we did get a proposal from the contract, Sanford Sewer Extension on S fourteen. And that we've noticed is giving that to the staff and giving back the recommendations. That, any questions that we have to answer?
Karen? Anything else in council? And you have a closed session. I know there's a rental code thing that that's the time you told me, Ryan.
After, you know, completing.
And then, so we're moving to closed session and folks will probably lose some Facebook, but that closed session for some Iowa codes, that's twenty-one point five one I to evaluate professional competency of individuals who are in higher performance discharge. Is it considered necessary to prevent any of this collateral injury to that individual's reputation and that individual's reputation? We have a call question.